All the meeting to order. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Thank you, Alderman Stapps. We'll have a roll call.
I'm Easterly.
Here.
I'm the steps.
Yeah.
I'm Walker.
Present.
I'm Bullitt.
Yes.
I'm Brown.
Here.
I'm Mays.
Here.
I'm Hope.
Okay, we each were presented with a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting. I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on into committee reports. Ways and Means, Alderman Easterly.
Yes, Mayor. We'll see if we can muddle through this without making too many boo-boos tonight. All right, we have two budget adjustments for right at the present. We have one that's a follow-up on number 12. It's a resolution and we'll do that. We'll take it up after they vote on the resolution. First budget adjustment is a $3,000 gas expense budget, heating gas bill for the fire department, and it's to come from operating expenses and they know nothing required on the method of financing for us, the general fund is concerned. I move that we accept this budget adjustment from the fire department.
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the budget adjustment from the fire department for $3,000. Is there any questions? Here none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a second budget adjustment that we're going to split as of right at the moment. We're going to hold the part about the additional jail transport officer for more information. But we do have a budget adjustment for auto insurance reimbursement for vehicle that was totaled in amount of $23,580. And there'd be nothing come out of the general fund. It'll be the purchase automobile, but it's from the insurance getting back on it. And I move that we accept this from the police department.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the budget adjustment for the purchase of an auto for $23,580. Are there any questions? Here none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move that we pay the bills of the city.
We have a motion that we, the bills of the city be paid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the report.
Okay, we'll move on into ordinances and resolutions. Alderman Easterly. We'll deal with that one after the resolution.
Yes, Mayor, we're going to complete the agenda as stated on here. The one, two, and three will be read for the third time. We have the, number four will be read for the second. Five, six will be read for the first time and the rest of the resolution will be completed.
Okay.
That concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Walker.
No reports, Mayor.
Okay. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Holken. He's not here tonight. Has anybody else got a report? Did they have a meeting? Move on to Public Works, Alderman Mays.
We had a meeting on June 10th, 2014. We discussed the development of the Townsend Park ball fields. That's what the budget adjustment is about after a while. It's item number 12. Alderman Stapps and myself were present. And we asked for a due pass on it. If there's any question, we'll bring up Mr. Larry Matthews to discuss it in further details. And we also discussed the negative impact or the impact of the 71602 zip code Whitehall has on the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, census population. We discussed all this as well. And it's accounted for over the last eight to 10 years. That's what we looked at. Just trying to look ahead and continue to save our city, the great city of Pine Bluff. And right now it's up behind UAPB, which they have a 71601 zip code. And what it's doing now is coming up to, that would be the next thing changed in that area, right? It's three-fourths of the fourth ward is already 71602. So what's left now is the UAPB area. And they have a 71601 zip code, which will automatically be changed. Regional Park has the 71602 zip code. And if you look at it, the new business that came in, also has the 71602 zip code, which enters them into the city of Whitehall. And we discussed that as well. End of my report.
Thank you, sir. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd.
Oh, Boyd, man.
Thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown.
Officially, no report. However, I'm always on the track that Pine Bluff is losing population and we need to make a development so that we can re-recoup rate our tax base. The problem really happening is that, I know we can't do anything about it because it's hindsighting. But I would have preferred for Walmart to be out by the mall, but that didn't happen. But as small as Pine Bluff is, I guess we still could have two shopping areas. But there's a lot of land out by the mall that has for sale or for lease on it. And it appears to me nobody in Pine Bluff is trying to get anybody interested in buying that land. I don't know if it's because the land is too high or nobody is trying to invite anybody in. But I think those things are what it's going to take to keep them all. Those are the things it's going to take to keep our tax base here in Pine Bluff. Because not only in Pine Bluff, by us having them all, we use the citizens that live here in Pine Bluff. But if we have what they need, the people are doing some war and Monticello will drive into our city for our malls. So we must do what we can to keep our mall afloat and get things out by the mall. So whether that be the alliance, whether that be their 3A cent sale tax money, or the chamber, or whatever we want to call it, somebody needs to go to work and try to sell or bring somebody, get somebody interested in that land. Because this is Pine Bluff and the way I understand it, it's not going anywhere. We could lose population, but it's still going to have a land formation. The earth is not going to roll up and turn it away. So it's going to be here. So whoever's listening that could be involved in that, and even if I had to be involved in it, we need to do something to change the way we look at Pine Bluff. And on my way here, just five minutes ago, I saw something. And I was hoping for remodeling. Did I see Wendy's closing on Main Street? That's horrible. That is real horrible. Because Pine Bluff is too small to lose Main Street. We're not a big city. I could see a big city losing something on Main. We're too small to lose anything. I'm next door. You're my next-door neighbor. How you going to lose downtown Pine Bluff? You're my next-door neighbor, George. So our business is supposed to be our business. And there's nowhere in the world we're supposed to lose. We've lost the KFC over there. The McDonald's left, I think, for selfish reasons. But we've lost the Wendy's. I definitely will tell you again that McDonald's left for selfish reasons because the superintendent had the guts to close up that high school. That was a high school versus a college. And he got upset, the owner got upset and moved it to Olive Street. And that's the bottom line, because he wasn't losing any money. That does hurt the competition. When KFC left and then McDonald's left, that certainly hurt Wendy's. But we have to do something. I mean, we have a town and nobody's working. It looks like nobody's working for Pine Bluff to stay afloat. I mean, we lost Spurlock's Motors. Nobody bought it. Nobody's taking it over. I guess his kids doesn't live here. I mean, every time a business go out of business, we suffer. I mean, we got to start thinking, somebody should be responsible for getting a new business in there or helping. I mean, why, how are we going to continue to pay the employees of this city if we don't have taxes here? If we don't have somebody here selling things so that we can stay afloat? This is some serious business. We all sitting out there and I think that most of us are waiting on retirement. That's not for me. I'm waiting on for Pine Bluff to grow. There are some people that's waiting on retirement. They don't care whether Pine Bluff live or die. We need to change the people on our downtown development because we're not getting anywhere. We keep saying that we love downtown Pine Bluff and it looks like it's getting raggedier with buildings and nothing new is happening. So I ask you to leave Pine Bluff and go to another city and come back and tell me what you think about downtown other cities. Ela Raider or any other city that has a downtown and watch what they're doing. We got to do it here. We got to stop thinking that Pine Bluff is just going to automatically be better. It's not. It's getting worse. And it's our fault. And I'm saying that as a city council member, because I don't want 10 years from now they'll say, "The city council caused that. We didn't cause it. We're not causing it." I'm saying we need to do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Move on to the administration report. Alderman Stapps.
Yes, Mayor. We had two things we discussed. Was item four, ordinance number four, which was at the administration committee. But as our district, it's supposed to go to public safety. So we will read it for the second time tonight. And we'll pass it on to the public safety committee.
One other thing we discussed, I see that we have Mr. Willie Grant and Mr. Laron Tidwell. There were several things that have been brought to our attention. I addressed it in our meeting and I've asked Ms. Conaway and even the mayor to give me some information so we can validate to see if there's any related to the allegations that being made. So that information is going to be gathered. So, you know, there won't be nothing that we can address at this point with them coming unless, you know, if we got something different than what we already had, is already being addressed in the administration committee. No further report.
Thank you, Alderman Stapps. Public Safety, Alderman Easterly.
Don't have a report, but we'll have a public safety meeting at 4:00 before the first council meeting next month. And that'll take up number four. And we'll also take, at that time, take reports for the departments in the public safety. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Move on to presentations and opposed ordinances and resolutions. Yes, sir.
At this time, I would like, I'm the sponsor of, not the number one on it, and I would like to pull it for a different study.
So we're not going to read number one for the third time? Okay, will it be placed on the calendar for next month? All right, then we'll move on. Orders and resolutions. Alderman Easterly.
We go to number two.
Move on to number two.
All right, Mayor, have an ordinance for protection of the public peace and order, amending Article III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for related purposes. Up to the third and final reading.
An ordinance for protection of the public peace and order, amending Article III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for related purposes.
Second.
No, you made the motion, Craig.
Well, I'm just saying, a motion to accept it.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Move on to number three.
Mayor, have an ordinance amending section 7-474 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting permit fees. Up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending section 7-474 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting permit fees.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance amending section 7-47 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting permit fees. Is there any discussion or questions?
Yes, 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 Mayor Brummett.
Yes, sir.
This is my ordinance as well. First of all, I wish I could have said something about the first ordinance I had. I mean, but we're going to move on to this one. This is, I had some businesses here and some citizens that were saying that, just say for instance, if you have a window broken out of your house and it costs $100, okay, you would have to go out and buy a permit, a window, and then pay the labor to put it in. They want to raise that up for at least to $500 so that you won't have to go buy the fee, then the window, and then have the labor put on it. And a lot of your landlords and a lot of your glass companies in town are really concerned about this. Because as soon as they tell the people that the window going to cost over $100, the people, then they say the permit going to cost, I think, 35 or something like that, the citizen gets upset. And they say, "It's just $100." So the cost escalates. And that's why I've listened to some citizens, like I do all the ordinances I do, and I'm asking you all to help me help the citizens of Pine Bluff with this ordinance.
I guess I'm missing it out. Go ahead, Tim.
I happened to be talking to Jalen, I believe, with the inspection department. And we were discussing something else about the inspection. And this came up. And he said that it was really good that it would help them as well. Because, and he went into the fact that if you had a small item for $100, then you would have to go in and pay a fee, which would raise it up. So they were all for it.
Any other questions? Here none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good. I don't have an ordinance amending the job description for the position of Chief of Police in the Police Department, requiring that no person may be promoted to positions of, excuse me, Deputy Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Captain or equivalent, and that no person may be promoted to the positions of Assistant Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Deputy Chief or equivalent for the related purposes, and declaring an emergency up for the second reading.
An ordinance amending the job description for the position of Assistant Chief of Police in the Police Department, requiring that no person may be promoted to the positions of Deputy Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Captain or equivalent, and that no person may be promoted to the positions of Assistant Chief of Police who does not hold the rank of Deputy Chief or equivalent, and for related purposes, and declaring an emergency.
Place it on the calendar.
Mayor, have an ordinance prohibiting the purposeful removal or damaging of signs. Up for the first reading.
Whereas it has become all too common for vandals to remove or damage expensive signs placed on property for advertisement and other purposes, and city legislation is needed to address this problem and augment any applicable state rule. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one. It shall be unlawful for any person to purposely act to remove, deface, or damage a sign lawfully cited on real property unless the person is the owner of the sign or authorized by the owner to do so, or the owner of the real estate and the sign has been placed on the property without permission. Section two, a person convicted of this offense shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and fined a sum no less than $300 or more than $1,000, or incarcerated in the Jefferson County Detention Center for a term not to exceed 10 days, or both fine and incarceration within the prescribed parameters, and shall further reimburse the owner of the sign for its full value. Section three, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, it shall be published by the clerk.
Place it on the calendar. Should it go to committee? What committee should it go to? Do you think Public Health and Welfare?
Either one, it's damaging or whichever you think it ought to go for.
I think Public Safety.
That's what he said.
I would think, because this purposeful removal of a sign, be stealing, I would think it would come out of Public Safety.
Okay.
Move along. Have an ordinance providing that the City Inspection Department waive any permit and inspection fees for prospective real estate in the downtown area up for the first reading.
Whereas it is desired to encourage the revitalization of the downtown area, and whereas one method toward this end is to waive applicable permit and inspection fees for prospective purchases of real estate in the downtown area until further notice. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that any charge or fee imposed by city ordinance for a permit or permits for development and the inspections of real estate and improvements located in the downtown area of the city are hereby waived until further notice for prospective purchases of property. Section two, as used in this ordinance, downtown area is defined as being that area between Martha Mitchell Expressway on the north, Harding Avenue on the south, Convention Center south to 10th Avenue, extended to Georgia Avenue south to Harding Avenue on the east, and Walnut Street south from Martha Mitchell Expressway to transition to Olive Street, and then south to Harding Avenue on the west. As used in this ordinance, real estate means all property within the described downtown area, except property which is zoned for residential use only. Section three, this ordinance shall continue to be in effect until repealed or superseded. Section four, this ordinance not being of a general or permanent nature, publication is not required.
Place it on the calendar. Again, should this go to committee?
Development planning, I would think, has to.
July.
Next meeting will be July. We can pick on that.
That'll be fine, because it won't go for the final reading until after that. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and/or structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement.
Whereas the City Council has determined that the structures located on the property listed in section three of this resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and/or structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement. Any discussion?
May I have a amendment here? I think you want to have a copy of it. It's the one that's going to be removed. I'm able to contact the property owner.
So you're going to make that in form of an amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution to remove the, on the copies that we all have a copy of. Is there any discussion or concern about removing those? Here you're none, all in favor of approving the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the original as amended. Is any questions? Here you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, have a resolution of the members of the City Council to avail themselves of the resources of the Arkansas Municipal League for involvement in training.
Whereas the Arkansas Municipal League offers workshops and programs intended to involve and train members of the governing bodies of municipalities in addressing the myriad of matters which concern municipal government. Whereas it behooves the members of this council to avail themselves of the many hours of training available. And whereas the annual budget for the city has set aside for use of each council member a sufficient sum to attend training events. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that each member of the City Council holding office as of January 1, 2015, and thereafter should avail his or herself of the training resources of the Arkansas Municipal League and participate in the training concerning a certified municipal official.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution of the members of the City Council to avail themselves of the resources of the Arkansas Municipal League for involvement in training. Any discussion?
I have one. Why would we need a resolution for something like this?
Well, it's basically for the future older persons that comes aboard as leaders in the city to maintain and grow with the Arkansas Municipal League. That's a choice you have. I mean, we're all giving $1,000 each year, but it won't go into effect until January 1, 2015. Anybody coming after that will have the opportunity to grow and learn and continue to help our great city grow. That's basically what it is. It's not asking the council now, but anybody after January 1, 2015. I mean, it's a choice anywhere it goes. That's what it is, that's a choice.
But that's what I'm saying. If we have a choice, then I think we ought to have some resolution in place that mandate that a person does so. Now, I thought that we had something, I don't know if Walker has presented it or not, but some of us have not got any municipal code books. And if we were going to do anything, I think those are the things that we could request that all the person be given, given a copy of that. As I understand, those books at one time cost at least $75. I think that would be some money well spent, but I don't think that we need a resolution to tell all the person that they got to go and get some training, this kind of stuff. We know it's available and then that person, he or she would make those decisions.
Well, it's available for future older persons, males and females, to go to continue to gain some future political structure as far as maintaining and organizing city government and continue to help our city grow. That's the only reason that I'm doing this. Like I said, it won't go into effect until January 1, 2015. And it will give them an opportunity to go to the Municipal League, to go to the training, to see what other cities are doing, see what other city leaders are talking about. That's why I did the resolution. No offense to anybody here, I'm just looking into the future, all the persons that's coming behind us, including myself.
Any other questions? All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Let's have a roll call, please.
I'm Easterly. I'm the steps.
No.
I'm Walker.
Yeah.
I'm Boyd.
No.
I'm Brown.
No.
I'm Mays.
Motion fails.
Mayor, have a resolution adopting the downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan as an official policy document for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas the City of Pine, the City of Pine Bluff Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 29, 2014, as provided for in section six, Act 186 of the statutes of the State of Arkansas, the purpose of which was to hear any and all persons interested in commenting on the proposed downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan. And whereas the City of Pine Bluff Planning Commission has adopted this downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan as a planning document, and whereas the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff has repeatedly affirmed its support of the revitalization of downtown Pine Bluff through numerous capital investments and policy adoptions. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan be adopted as an official policy document of the city of Pine Bluff. Section two, that consideration be given to the implementation of the downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan by the City of Pine Bluff, other agencies, and property owners in downtown Pine Bluff to further the growth and development of the district.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt the resolution adopting the downtown Pine Bluff streetscape plan as an official policy document for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Is there any discussion?
I did speak to Mr. Matthews, but I forgot to ask him at this time, do they have a plan that is available for the aldermen, all the persons? they have a plan that is available for, uh, the alderman, all the persons?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if you recall, um, Cleveland Engineers came earlier that month in April, they made a presentation. I think they gave out handouts to, uh, each one of the alderman persons. And I think at that time, I think Alderman Stepp recommended that we send it to the planning commission for their approval prior to the council approving it. And we have, I have it at the office, they have put together a, a nice brochure, uh, pamphlet-type, uh, document, which we presented to the planning commission that, that details all of the guidelines. And this is basically a guideline book for what should happen downtown as regards to signage, stop signs, advertisement signs, uh, all the things that would go along typically down the street way. It does not affect the property on this building. All of this is within the city right away as to what will be developed and how it will be developed. And yes, I do have the information to give to the alderman for them to carry, as well as we will supply a zoning with a copy of the adoption, so that when somebody comes in and when we begin development, we will have it for it. Once we adopt the policy, then we can go ahead on and continue on with starting with some design for construction in phases for the project.
Say from Fifth Street, because down to Fifth Street, I'm sure there's a sewer and electric and, and what was probably in place. Uh, is there gonna be a problem from, say, third down where the sewers would have to be done in there? And if so, that be done before we do?
Well, well, what would happen with the streets state project? It will, it will be broken up, I believe, into four sections. And each section will be worked at a time, say from Walnut to Main Street, that section. And whatever infrastructure problem like sewer, water, gas, in that particular section will be improved at that particular point. And will continue down the project. So each section has its own set of problems. So we'll, we'll work those out with utility relocation, upgrading fire hydrants, whatever in that section that needs to be replaced or upgraded, that, that is our plan to do it as we go through it.
You said already, sort of speculated in the budget.
Well, since we decided to take it in sections, and this will be the last bond issue on the five eight cent sales tax, so we're going to lay out each section, and we will present it back to the council as to which section based on ex, estimated cost, as to which section they would like for us to approach. Any other question?
This isn't allocating any money or anything, this is just adopting the policy and the, uh, pro, the plans that were presented.
No, this does not involve any money, just, just the design phase. And we can't proceed on until the design phase approved by the council.
I know, I was just, you know, that was on my mind, I just had it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor have a resolution appropriating funds to the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff Economic Research and Development Center and Business Support Incubator to support small business development and the other, and other community economic development activities.
Whereas the city of Pine Bluff and the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff via the Economic Research and Development Center has suc- has a successful history of collaborating together on community economic and business development projects and services. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff, along with other state and federal agencies, in two thousand and six, partnered with UAPB in the development of the UAPB Business Support Incubator and Office Complex in the downtown central business district to house and nurture the development of small businesses and create a culture of entrepreneurship. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff through resolution number thirty-one seventy-five authorized the mayor and the director of the Economic and Community Development Department to enter into a memorandum of, of agreement on July sixth, two thousand and nine, with the university to foster and promote small business development in designated revitalization areas of the city. And whereas the memorandum of, of agreement authorized the city of Pine Bluff to provide funding from its Economic and Community Development Department to match dollar for dollar with the funds provided by the UAPB ERDC to, uh, create and capitalize the UAPB City of Pine Bluff revolving loan fund for the express purpose of providing loans to small businesses operating in the designated revitalization areas of the city. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff via resolution number thirty-four zero one appropriated and authorized the mayor to transfer funding to ERDC for business retention and expansion services targeted to small business enterprises consistent with the memorandum of agreement between the city and UAP, UAPB. And whereas the parties which, the parties wish to expand and amend the memorandum of agreement as provided in the First Amendment. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff views the technical assistance services and programs offered by ERDC, including those provided under the auspices of the UAPB Business Support Incubator as a, as vital components necessary for the continued revitalization and growth of Pine Bluff. And whereas it is in the city's interest to continue to partner with UAPB in efforts to, that generate economic development in the community. And whereas there are funds available in the bond reserve set aside from the collections generated by the five eight cent sales tax adopted by the city voters in February, two thousand and eleven, to allocate a small portion to support the activities of ERDC and the Business Support Incubator. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the attached First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between UAPB and the city of Pine Bluff. The document is incorporated by reference herein as if fully set forth word by word. The, the original memorandum of agreement with this First Amendment constitutes the agreement of the parties for the services provided by UAPB and the consideration paid by the city for the services. Section two, there is hereby appropriated the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the five eight cent bond reserve funds account to be paid over to the Economic and Research and Development Center of the UAP, of UAPB to support its work and activities to foster small business development and community economic development activities in downtown Pine Bluff and the community at large. If for any reason the bond reserve fund is unavailable for this purpose, the finance department shall identify an account or accounts to secure the funds to provide the council with a budget adjustment to affect this appropriation.
We have a motion to second to adopt a resolution appropriating funds to the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff Economic Research and Development Center and Business Support Incubator, support small business development, and other community and economic development activities. The floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir.
I think this first came up the first year, and we didn't deal with it due to budget adjustment to balance out the budget. And Mr. Gillette, they're still sort of struggling in that area, and still needing the city financial gap to make it through this year and, whatever we have to consider at the end of the year. They've already got to do something in the new year to help them to, with the contribution that they're making to the city.
Okay.
I had two questions. This is a, uh, I know it's a narrow, uh, what's allowed in the, what the funds are allowed for. Is it, is that an allowable expense of the five eight cent sales tax? Steve, I guess you'd be the one to answer that.
These are bond funds, these are reserve funds from the five eight cent sales tax, and they can be appropriated to any valid municipal purpose.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I was, that's what I was wondering. I knew, I knew there was a narrow window on some of that stuff, and that, that falls under that.
Yeah, the, the bond funds are restricted to the language of the ballot, but, uh, these are sales tax funds that have come in that are, were planned to, for either for debt service or for operating expense for a project that's not been built yet. And, uh, we just set them aside in a, in a reserve, but, uh, they, per the council in, in, in the budget. And then the council can turn around and appropriate them for any, uh, municipal purpose.
That's what, that's what, that's my question.
Steve, is that the same, uh, bond money that Townsend Park would come from?
Yes, that's the same reserve that the Townsend Park funds would come from, and, yes.
At the Townsend Park, how much will we have left?
Um, I believe I had that number behind the, uh, budget adjustment. Uh, the reserve stands at a million, six thirty-nine, uh, eight eighty-three right now. Uh, with Townsend Park proposal at nine hundred and sixteen thousand, that would take it to seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine fifty-eight. That would be what's left.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I mean, my question is, is just on the table. It's on the table, it's not for you, thank you.
I have a question, I just, I just wanna make a statement. And it, and it's gonna, it's gonna reflect what I said when my report was being given, and that is that we have to do something for Pine Bluff ourselves. When I was at county, uh, the county donated, and I wanna say a half million, but I know we gave fifty thousand dollars a year for X amount of years to the UAPB, uh, it was the stadium fund. However, the city talked to the administrators at UAPB and, and somehow put them on the, on the track to build the incubator downtown on Main Street because it will be a development for our downtown. The local businesses, the banks, and ourselves, along with the county and other entities, have not actually supported that incubator like they should. And I, and I think that's a, that's a slap in our, our faces. So I certainly, uh, in whatever form or fashion, would support, uh, a legal, uh, resolution to help the UAPB incubator. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Second question I didn't get to answer yet, ask yet. Uh, I was wondering, since, uh, two thousand and six, could, uh, could you kind of give us, uh, how many, um, businesses have been in, that's in business now that you, that we, that's been brought by the incubator, Mr. Gillette? Just give us a kind of an update.
Good evening. Yes, to answer your question, Alderman Brummett, there's about thirty businesses that have been in the, I'm sorry, oh, sorry. I must be silly. Got a little problem hearing every night again, but anyway, there are about thirty businesses that have been assisted. Uh, out of that's thirty or so businesses that have been assisted, probably about eighty, eighty or so of those businesses are still in operation today in one form or another. Sometimes businesses come in under one form and then leave out another.
How many are still in?
A biggie part.
How many of the, of them are still in business, you say?
About eighty percent of those are still in business, yeah. In one form or another. Uh, sometimes you end up with, people come in as one entity, leave out, it, come in as two entities, leave out as one, but they still in business doing business. And I can provide the council with a thorough report on that.
Any other questions? Are you not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our mayor have a resolution requesting city officials maintain records pertaining to the effect of zip code seven one six oh two on municipal tax collections, assessments, and functions in the zip code area.
Whereas the zip, the seven one six zero two zip code is shared by the city of Whitehall and much of western Pine Bluff. And whereas there is evidence that the sharing of this mail designation has adverse impact on the city of Pine Bluff is in tax collections and assessments, and may adversely impact municipal functions in the covered area. And whereas the city council has already created a committee to study the effects of the shared zip code on the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that to assist the, the special committee in its operations and compile documentation on the issue, all city elected officials are requested to retain any records or documentation which shall come into their possession in the normal course of business that may pertain to the effects of the shared seven one six zero two zip code with the city of Whitehall. The records should be provided to the special committee charged with studying the effects of the zip code designation on, on the city of Pine Bluff.
Move for adoption?
Second. Have a motion to second to adopt a resolution requesting city officials maintain records pertaining to the effect of zip code seven one six oh two on municipal tax collections, assessments, and functions in the zip code area. Any, any questions or discussion? Mr. Brown?
I don't think we need to talk very much, I think mostly everybody at this table would wanna make sure that our, our residents and our business taxes are coming to Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Thank you.
Once again, this is just to have documented the information that we needed in order to, to show that the zip code has, has caused a lot of effect as far as the census. About twelve thousand people are, are out of the city limits of Pine Bluff into that seven one six oh two zip code. And it's causing a major impact as far as a lot of confusion and financial, uh, problems for the great city, for the great city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and the citizens. And it's just to, uh, give documentation of where we're going with this and the next step as far as how to retain our citizens back in the near future.
Let me say this. I'm in support of what we're trying to do, but I don't, I wanna send a, a message out to, to the citizen that would impact the city without us having the accurate information that we need to, to have out here. And I don't wanna send a message that we already have information saying we've been adversely affected. It is our belief that, that it could have happened, but I don't, I don't, at this point, the committee don't have any fact to substantiate that. And that's what we're doing, circling the wagon to see if we have been adversely affected by the zip code and by the taxes. And I, and we are working on that. And, uh, and if any council person or any citizen has some information that might live in one of those areas, certainly we will ask you to pass that information on to the city council, and then we could check into it. But at this point, I don't wanna go on record as saying that, yeah, we know that so many people have been affected by this, and there's a possibility that it could have affected our census count in two thousand and ten. But we won't know, we don't know that information at this point, but certainly we're looking into it to see if it's, if it, have it affected us in any way.
So now is a solid committee in place looking into this?
Uh, my, my, Alderman Mays and myself, and then we're asking that any council persons to get involved with us to help to, and to ascertain this information, but the two of us are working, uh, together on this. But I, I didn't want us to send a message out there saying-
This would be pretty one too.
Right, that's right. And I don't want us to send a message out there saying we know that, that we have been affected by twelve thousand people, and we don't have the documentation to prove that, and then we made some accusations. I don't wanna get in there fighting the federal government about something that I don't have all the information to, to, to say one or another, but it's certainly something that we're looking into, and there's a possibility that something like that could have happened. But at this point, we just checking some information to try to see what has happened concerning that zip code.
Ms. Walker?
I, I agree with, with both Alderman Stepp and Alderman Mays, uh, that, uh, Alderman Stepp clarified, uh, that there was nothing documented, but that we're, we're looking into it. And, but I think that the resolution is, I don't think he was saying that the resolution wasn't good for that.
No, I wasn't saying that the resolution wasn't good, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna us to go out here and say that, that we have some numbers out here that know has, that has affected us in a certain way versus the city of Whitehall. Uh, we don't have that documentation at this point to say whether it did or not. Certainly we're looking in there as a possibility that it could have happened, and it might not have happened. We don't know that because of the census and how it was taken. But it's something that we need to look into, and it's gonna take some time to even ascertain that type of information. So certainly we don't have that documentation now. Whatever documentations are out there, we hope that we can get that, and it can prove or disprove some of the notions that we might have.
But this, this resolution here is saying that you have evidence.
No, we don't have that evidence, we don't have that, we don't have that, uh, we don't have that evid- evidence at this point. I'm not aware of it.
Says there is evidence. Says there is evidence.
I have, I have the evidence of it, and I'll, I'll share it with you all. Put it in your hands. Uh, this is basically just to document it and let us know which kind of direction to take with this. It's a very serious matter. Uh, like I said, once again- Like I said once again, you got Regional Park is in Whitehall, that's Harbor Oaks. All the way, if you Google it, it's all the way to the port of Pine Bluff with the seven-one-six-zero-two ZIP Code. But this is all about documentation and direction, and we can go from there.
Alderman, if you don't mind, I would like for us to, if you have that documentation, allow us an opportunity to study it and look at it together before we sign off on it saying that we have some evidence. You might have that, but for us to vote on it means that we know that you have that. Allow us an opportunity to take a look to see what you've got before we go and vote on something like that.
Well, this is just to say, we know it exists, and we don't want to be blindsided by things that will affect us in the future. It's not committing to a whole lot, it's just keeping a paper trail on what we're doing and what we're discussing.
Well, keep in mind also that we have a lot of seven-one-six-zero-three ZIP Code and seven-one-six-zero-one ZIP Code that are not in the city, so they're out in the county. And I'm wondering what kind of, you know, you may open a can of worms and...
Those are still Pine Bluff ZIP Codes.
That's what I was fixing to say. You've got a lot of them, that may make it, that may cut both ways. You have to be real careful what you're doing there because all of eastern, all of south, and all of southwest Jefferson County is seven-one-six-zero-one and six-zero-three, and they're listed as Pine Bluff.
Right.
So it could go the opposite way. You could lose, there may be some of them that got counted in with, so you have to, I mean, we're just pointing out the fact that that can go, that ZIP Code thing can go both ways. You can understand you can lose or you can gain either way.
I think that what Alderman Mays is saying, it's a difference of the location and the ZIP Code itself when you pull it up. If you have a certain address that is in Dollar Way or a certain area, and you put in that address, and it shows up Whitehall, Arkansas, instead of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And that does, if it, I don't know what section has on the census yet, because we're looking into that still, as Alderman Steves said, but in the meantime, I know this causes confusion because people have said, you know, that's Whitehall, Arkansas. If you pull it up, it doesn't say Pine Bluff. So I think, you know, to me, the resolution is good if maybe he would take out the part where it says adverse impact on the city of Pine Bluff in the tax collection, because at this point, we don't know about the tax collection, but we know that the assessment is there because the assessment shows Whitehall, Arkansas. But, you know, that's the only part that I see, you know, I think he said things that wasn't in here.
Alderman Brown has a business in Dollar Way, what's your ZIP Code?
If you put my business in the internet, you know, to look up my business, it'll say Whitehall.
That's where the mail is going.
That's the postal department that comes in. See, that's not a...
I really wish y'all would reword this and maybe bring it back.
You know, I think if he would, you know, would it be acceptable, Alderman Steves, if the tax collection part was...
Well, not only that, I think the word evidence has more impact than anything else now.
That's it.
When you say you got evidence on, that mean that you have a true impact.
Well, if he takes out evidence and tax...
We believe that it has adverse effect, we don't know that. When you say we have evidence of that, that mean that we know without a doubt that we have checked this out, and he said that he has and he's going to provide it to us, and I think that you need to do that for the council before we vote on something saying that we have evidence. So I think that even though we agree that we believe that it could have some effect, what I would like for you to share that information with us and let us all take a look at it. Again, we might not have a problem with the resolution coming by supporting this information that we are trying to ascertain.
Didn't we, haven't we set up a committee to look at it? Well, we don't, no, we've set up a committee to look at it, we don't...
Well, this is basically what this resolution is about, discussion and documentation. Joe, you got that? Can we reword that to what they're saying?
Just take out that where...
Okay, I'm listening to you all because it's a very serious matter, and it needs to be addressed before we wake up and we have a one ZIP Code city. And it needs to be addressed, and I'll listen to you all and I'll bring it back in another form.
Alderman Brown? Alderman Brown, he had his hand up.
If he takes that out, would that be ZIP Code?
First of all, you talked yourself out of the regular passing of this resolution, but if you take out the second whereas, we could vote on tonight and be done with it. Just take out whereas, the second whereas, there is evidence, that a whole section will start from twelve through fourteen, just take that out and we can vote on this tonight. Because that was my concern too, the word evidence means that you may be accused of whoever's in charge of that from either Pine Bluff office or the Whitehall office, and you're saying that they've done something that's not duly proper. So let's wait till we can see what's going on before we use that word evidence. So just, if you don't mind, we could vote on tonight, but remove from twelve to fourteen.
Could you be in the book tonight?
But there is evidence and it's been, okay, I'm agreed to whatever you all say to get it through.
That's a suspect to you, that it could be, it's a suspect.
Well, I don't want to, okay, I don't want to get into more and more details about it, and we're going to leave, I understand where we're headed with this right now, but it's very serious, and I listen to you all, and, okay, what do you want me to do?
But it's your resolution, so you can make...
Well, I want to make sure it passes so we can get this step here out the way, because it's basically...
We just told you what it takes to pass it.
Okay. What would it take, Joe?
This, you can delete to section lines twelve through fourteen, and it won't affect it.
Okay. Can we do that tonight?
Yeah.
You just make the motion.
That's fine.
Just make a motion to amend it to remove lines twelve through fourteen.
To amend lines, items twelve through fourteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to remove items, lines twelve through fourteen. Any further discussion? There are none, all in favor of this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This amendment passes. We will need a motion as amended.
Or something?
Sir?
I don't think we need...
Regional as amended.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Somebody make a motion for the regional as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to second that the regional as amended be adopted, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on.
Thank you all.
Mayor, I have a resolution approving the budget for the Townsend Park Ball Field Complex project, authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with Phil Green Electrical Service Incorporated and Gerald E. Prince Construction Company for the work on the project, authorizing the purchase of a lighting package, approving design and construction, administration fees for the project, and approving contingency expenditures for bleachers and shade structures and related purposes.
Whereas after solicitation for and receipt of bids pertaining to the work on the renovation of the Townsend Park Ball Field Complex, a final budget for the work has been prepared and submitted to the council for approval to complete the project. And whereas it is desired to execute agreements with the entities which submitted the lowest, most responsible bid in relation to areas of the work, to purchase the lighting package needed to provide the payment of the administration and management fees related to the work, and to authorize contingency expenditures for bleachers and shade structures. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the total budget of one million, seventy thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents as set forth in the Attachment A here too, which is incorporated by reference, and the itemized expenditures for the stated purposes and in particular amounts set forth in Attachment A for each purpose is hereby approved. Section Two, the mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with Phil Green Electrical Service Incorporated of Girdon, Arkansas, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for its services and performing necessary electrical work on the project on terms set forth in its bid specifications and otherwise standard provisions for work of the same nature in the field. The city clerk shall attest the mayor's signature if needed. Section Three, the mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with Gerald E. Prince Construction Company of Little Rock in the amount of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for its services and performing necessary construction work on the project on terms set forth in its bid specifications and otherwise standard provisions for work of the same nature in the field. The city clerk shall attest the mayor's signature if needed.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to second to adopt a resolution approving the budget for the Townsend Park Ball Field Complex project, authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with Phil Green Electrical Service Incorporated and Gerald E. Prince Construction Company for work on the project, authorizing the purchase of a lighting package, approving design and construction, administration fees for the project, and approving contingency expenditures for bleachers, shade structures, and related purposes. Any other questions? Any discussion? There are none, all in favor of...
We were in the meeting, we've already discussed, we've heard it's...
Well, I'll say this here, since it's in the fourth ward, since it's Townsend Park, it's past time that we move on this project. It's a good project, it'll bring tournaments to Townsend Park and the fourth ward, and it's just a great day in Pine Bluff and the fourth ward for this to happen. Thank you.
Any other discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mayor, I would request for budget adjustment for the funded project. This be for additional budget to complete Townsend Park Ball Fields Lighting and Combination Restroom Concession Stand Building, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation Town in the Park. And the same total will come out of the five cent sales tax projects reserves, and they know, undesignated general funds, and I move we accept this budget adjustment.
Motion been made in second, we accept the budget adjustment for funding of the project, additional budget to complete Townsend Park Ball Fields Lighting and Combination Restroom Concession Stand Buildings and other needs.
Nine fifteen, nine twenty-four, eighty-five.
Nine hundred.
Yes, sir.
Fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
I need to find those, yes, because I...
Did that come up in the beginning?
Yeah, we had it, they passed, Joe passed it out when we was in the back, meeting before the meeting.
We discussed this in committee earlier. I'm just trying to figure out what's going to come from.
Shut up. Joe said he put one down for you somewhere there.
Give him this. Give that.
Usually we do the, we do the supplements at the beginning of the day. Okay, just a second, I'm going to get right here in a second.
We're waiting. Do you have any questions or concerns you want to ask, or... You okay?
I see there's a transfer, I got it now.
Okay.
Because the first, I was going on the...
Now, this is coming out of the five-eight cent reserve monies that were set aside, there's one point six million, this will take about nine hundred thousand of it.
Some's already paid for.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the resolution, are the budget adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You can go to work, Mr. Matthews.
Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing purchase of most recent edition of Arkansas Municipal League's Handbook for Municipal Officials.
Whereas the Arkansas Municipal League has published its newest edition of Handbook for Arkansas Municipal Officials, and whereas it is desired that any member of the city council so desiring to be provided a copy of the most recent edition to assist the member in performance or of the duties of a member of the city's governing body. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the clerk is authorized to order a copy of the most recent edition of the Handbook for Arkansas Municipal Officials, published by the Arkansas Municipal League, for any member of the city council who requests a copy. The cost for the handbook shall be paid from the funds budgeted in the two thousand and fourteen annual budget for each council member to attend training and conferences.
I would like to change that from the city clerk to Steve Miller, I think that'd have to come through him, I understand.
That an amendment?
Yeah.
We haven't got a motion on the resolution yet.
Is the motion on the floor?
No, there's not a motion, no, there was a motion, Matthew.
Second.
Okay, a motion to the second to approve the resolution authorizing purchase of most recent edition of Arkansas Municipal League's Handbook for Municipal Officials. Any discussion?
Mayor, Mayor Brown, I think that that comes through Steve's office instead of the city clerk, since he was in charge, he would do...
Amendment, I mean, the motion.
Yes, he would do the budget adjustment from each account.
Is she making a motion, did I second that?
Okay, we got to, we'll amend it.
I think it's correct as it is. You don't order it from this lady?
The amendment's on the floor.
She's in the mayor's office. She's in the mayor's office.
I'd be happy to do it, just have it truck the mayor's office to order it, and then she can figure out who needs to do it, handle it. So we'll change line seventeen, it will read that the mayor's office authorized to order a copy of the most recent edition of the Handbook of Arkansas Municipal Officials. Do we need to do that in form of an amendment, or...
I don't know.
Sir?
I don't know. I'd rather share a dollar.
Okay.
That's okay.
It's personally, you know, this is accessible on the internet, we can look this up, correct?
Yeah, so, yes, yes, ma'am.
And I look it up all the time, you know, I think we need to add in there something like if the, if the alderman requests it, because I don't necessarily want one.
It's not for everybody. It's not going to order a blanket, three copies. It's just for the ones that want one.
That won't work.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, you got in there who requests a copy, good.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see that part. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries, passes?
Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek legal redress against owner of Main Street property.
Whereas owner about February twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, the property commonly known as four oh one South Main Street collapsed. High winds and rains caused one of the walls to fall. Because of imminent damage injury to the public, the city of Pine Bluff was compelled to knock down the remaining walls to prevent bricks and debris from causing further damage or injuries. And whereas through May two thousand and fourteen, the city of Pine Bluff has been in constant communication with the property owner about having the debris removed. The owner paid to have the building demolished and obtained an asbestos study of the remaining debris. The owner was in the process of making arrangements for the removal of the debris. He indicated that he planned to schedule, planned to schedule a time to meet with city officials to discuss potential remedies. However, there has been no subsequent dialogue with the property owner. And whereas the debris continues to pose a hazard to the health, safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Pine Bluff, the owner of the property should be compelled to enlist the services of a licensed asbestos contractor to remove the debris. And whereas the city's legal department should be authorized to seek legal redress against Joe Matter, owner of the property commonly known as four oh one South Main Street, Jefferson County, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the members of the city council are concerned that the debris located at four oh one South Main Street, Jefferson County, Pine Bluff, Arkansas poses a hazard to the public's health, safety, health, and welfare. The city attorney is authorized to seek legal redress in a court of competent jurisdiction.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to second to approve a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek legal redress against owner of Main Street property. Any questions?
Whatever we can do.
I have a question for the city attorney. If, just... If, just say if they do not adhere to this and clean up the property and the city have to do it, could we take eminent domain over the property?
We don't necessarily have a place on the property, but we're trying to get him to compel him to pay.
I said if he did not.
Not eminent domain, but a lane over the property.
No, I'm not, no, I don't, no, I don't mean, I mean, do you want the domain, because that way you could do something with the property.
It's just depending on whether it meets the criterion for eminent domain. If the city puts forth the criterion necessary to meet for eminent domain, then that's a possibility, but I don't think that they have that, those qualifications in place at this time.
Okay, well, I know, I was just saying if we have to, if the city have to, because if you do with it, you know, if they do not listen to the city on cleaning-
He's actually wanting to donate the property, so we don't even have to claim eminent domain. He doesn't even want it. The problem is going to be the cost of cleaning it up.
Is this, is this normally how we would handle something like this? You would think that if we go through the process now, that we would just file suit instead of the council having to pass legal documents? Is that, you feel that we need to do this?
I don't know who I spoke with prior to about this, but I was advised to do it. I think the council needs to be apprised of what suit the city attorney's office is filing, not just leaving in the newspaper. There needs to be a consensus among the council members, because maybe you don't, in some instances, you may not want to support that the lawsuit against someone or initiating a lawsuit at that time.
I got you. I got you. Okay, any other questions? There none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, they're completing the authority system resolution.
Entertain a motion adjourned.
Some move.
Motion and second adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do have two people, I need to call out their names for public comments. Is Mr. Willie Grant here? Is Mr. Leon, Lerong Tidwell, is he here? They're not here, so we will be adjourned. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's support and help tonight. Thank you.
I forgot to give you a hard time.